Call the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order. Or the attendance, all members are present. Moving on to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll stand. How's everybody doing tonight?
Fantastic.
Good. Okay, moving on to Article Three, approve the current agenda. So moved by Member Rissy, supported by. Member Deering, I didn't, I heard a voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to Article Four, does anybody wish to disclose a conflict of interest?
My tires, but I don't know if it's really a conflict.
It's a warehouse, I don't know that you kind of, you're further in the buyer chain. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Article Five, except the minutes of the September twentieth and December tenth Round Hill Committee Meetings, are these the same ones that submit, were submitted to Manager Swayze?
No.
No, thank you. Does anybody? Do I hear a motion, or does anybody have any comments?
I, I, I drafted both sets of these minutes, I noticed at the bottom of one, it doesn't say that, I don't think. That's an error on my part, but I did draft these just so. If anybody has a concern with them.
We can amend that in the motion, does anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty and December ten Round Hill Committee Meetings with the correction of adding Scott's name to the.
Thanks. For.
Motion made by Member Deering, supported by Member Oxley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
There'll be, Mr. Chairman, also, there'll be another set coming.
Yes, and it's my understanding that those are with Manager Swayze to.
Before passing those on, I just thought I'd, well, I didn't ask him to edit them, I just asked him, I wanted to give him opportunity if there was anything he felt that, that should be added that was left out. And I haven't heard anything, so.
Many have any concerns?
Just one clarification, did we vote to approve or to accept? Because most of us weren't there, so I don't know if we can speak to them, whether they are approve them.
Accept, I think. I'm sorry. It should be, except the minutes.
Everybody. I don't think we need to call that, can you, we'll just make them know for the record.
They were accepted.
Okay. Article Six, approve the minutes of the February seventh, twenty twenty-two meeting. Your motion?
I would move to approve.
Member Deering, move to approve.
Support.
Support by Member Rissy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Passes. All right. Article Seven, will acknowledge any visitors who are wishing to speak. Ask that comments are limited to five minutes, if it is about. I don't think, we, we don't have a public hearing for murder, so it can be about anything, does, do we have any visitors that wish to come forward and speak? If you do, please name your name and address. Do we have anybody on Zoom? We do not. All right.
We're popular.
Yeah. Moving on to Article Y, case number twenty-two, three, six, nine, four, Scott G L L C.
So here, the applicant is requesting site plan approval for a one hundred thousand square foot addition to an existing sixty-five thousand square foot building. The existing building was built in early two thousand twenty and is used as a warehouse for national tire wholesale. A site plan for a ninety-seven thousand square foot addition was actually approved by the Planning Commission in June of two thousand twenty, but the project was never acted upon, so that approval expired after a year, and that's why it's back in front of you tonight. The new site plan is very similar to the previous one, except the addition has been expanded to a hundred thousand square feet, so three thousand square foot addition. And the parking has been reduced from approximately one hundred one spaces from that previous site plan to sixty-seven spaces that is showing on this site plan. And that sixty-seven spaces does still meet our minimum parking requirement based on the size of the addition. The addition does comply with all the required heights, area setback, and parking, parking regulations of the zoning district that it's in. The township engineers reviewed and approved the plans, the storm water will flow to a pond located on the adjacent property. There was some confusion about who owned that property to the south, but the applicant does actually own both properties, so there's no additional agreement needed for the grading work that'll be on that property. There is a special assessment due for the extension of the water main down Craft Avenue, and that will have to be addressed before a building permit can be issued. The fire department and airport have both reviewed the plans and provided comments back to the applicants. The applicant did submit a revised photometric plan late last week that does meet our regulations. Well, since, since some, two of their conditions have already been met, since the staff report's been written, I'm recommending approval of the site plan for the hundred thousand square foot building addition, with the condition that the applicant complies with the Township Engineer Letter dated March one, two thousand twenty-two, and all necessary permits are obtained before construction begins.
Does anybody have any questions for Planning Director Hildebrand? Yes.
Which one of us?
She can remember, dear, and go ahead.
Okay.
I did not see you, Wendy, sorry.
So, the airport and the fire department had comments, can you kind of tell us what those were about?
The fire department comments, I think, all the ways is that they have to place hoses in the building, since it's not an access road going about around it, so that's the places for hoses to be dropped. That's something they'll, again, review during the building permit process. And then the airport usually has a few comments such as. Yeah, you have to have a crane permit for construction and has to be taken down when it's not in use and things like that, and the applicant has been in touch with them for that.
Okay, and I noticed when I did a site visit yesterday, there was a neighbor across the street, has anyone else had any comments or?
I haven't heard any, no.
Member Corset.
I just have two clarifying questions. So, the same person owns this and then property to the south that the storm pond is going to be put on as?
Correct.
Okay, and then have you seen the agreement? The site agreement for them?
For the?
For the?
Pond. It's in. I did see it, I can't remember the details, but it was in the previous approval when the first building was approved back in two thousand nineteen. There should be a cop, there is a copy of it in there.
Okay.
Isn't that one of the requirements that you have on here, is that they provide that?
Yeah, and then there's the confusion of, whether that was one, but yeah, then the property owner owns both, so he don't need separate approval from himself. To get approval for it.
Yes, Member Oxley.
This narrative sheet that was submitted, I, I'm assuming that came from the property owner?
That did, yeah, or the engineer for the property owner.
Okay, just, I need some clarification on a couple of simple points dealing with the parking.
So they did, they did revise the parking sense that narrative, the narrative came in originally with the site plan, and then I noted that they should meet that minimum standards.
What's it say now?
So that parking has sixty-seven spaces now to meet that minimum. So originally, they're proposing fifty-six, I told them to bump it up to meet the minimum, and now they meet that.
Very good. Because I counted the spaces on the site plan, you know, sixty-seven, including for handicap.
Okay, any, any other questions? We want to hear from the applicant. Any questions for the applicant?
Hi, my name is Chuck Hoy, I'm here for Nader Bell, representing the applicant. And I'm actually here in the place of coworker of mine, so I'm just kind of standing in place, I don't really have too many more comments. But I can do my best to answer any questions, if you have anything specific, or track down anything else that you might need.
Yeah, Member Rissy.
I just, and you may not know the answer to this, since you're substituting, and that's fine, that really isn't bearing to what we're going to vote on, but is this going to bring any more jobs to, I mean, obviously, they're, they're enlarging the facility, are they picking up additional employees or staff, do you know if that's?
I would assume so, but I don't know any specifics on that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Are the applicants representative of a representative? Excellent, thank you. I don't think we have this slotted for public hearing. So this is just a site plan review, I don't know that there's even a, a vote per se, is there?
There is for the site plan review, still do approve it.
Okay. Somebody want to take a crack at this?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Oxley.
Yeah, I'd like to propose recommendation for approval for case number twenty-two dash thirty-six ninety-four, Scott G L L C, fifty-seven eighty-four Craft Avenue. That would include providing approval from the property owner to the south for the grading of their property. The applicant complies with the Township Engineer Letter dated March first, two thousand twenty-two, and all necessary permits are obtained before construction begins. That it's, they submit a revised photometric plan that meets township regulations, and that it provide sixty-seven parking spaces as shown.
Your support?
Awesome.
Some motion made by Vice Chair Oxley, supported by Member Corset, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to Article Nine. Strategic Plan Work Session.
We get a presentation? This is exciting. Nobody ever gives us presentations, I shouldn't say that, we do get the C I P from time to time. It's not exciting.
That's where we're there.
I was trying to figure that out when I saw. Plans over here. Don't put your notes up there, we'll be able to read them.
We have many computers, you can share.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Usually peering on other people's stuff.
Brian, what's the story on that? Do you know why I have, what the story is, and when they're going to fix that? This computer doesn't, doesn't connect to this. We have a problem. Oh, I, I know I've brought it up before, but I thought somebody else had to. It doesn't, when you click the box to switch, it doesn't switch, I guess.
There it is.
So maybe it was.
Yeah, I can watch down there, but. Number two. Chairman, and nobody's taught you that?
What time I want.
So welcome. I need to sit down here more often.
We're happy to be here tonight, my name is Chris Cory, I'm the West Machine Manager from McKenna, my colleague Danielle Parchard. We are consultants on the township strategic planning process. Purpose of strategic plan is to create a resident-driven set of priorities and actions for the township for, to execute over the next few years. And we've been at this for a little while now, but we're really kind of getting into weeds. First thing we did, and we'll talk about this in more detail in a minute, is a resident survey, which had, what, close to two thousand responses? That was designed to, as sort of an opening salvo in this process, to try to get at what a resident's most concerned about, what do they think the township should be actively doing? And now we'll be on the second phase, where we're going to work with you folks and the other boards and commissions on your priorities, and sort of mix and match those with you resident priorities, and go back to the residents and talk in more detail, back to you guys, and create final plans, so that's the overall picture of what we're doing. So we have some kind of an activity tonight. That we're actually, before we get into this, because even though I know you have, you have this in your packets, we kind of want to do this without discussing the public first, because we kind of want to see what you guys are thinking. So what I have here, pass out, it's pretty simple sheet of paper. Just ask you for your top three priorities for the Planning Commission, what are the three things you folks think this body should be doing over the next couple of years to advance the, the township's position from a planning and zoning perspective? That could be planning and zoning documents, you think, updated, that could be parts of the township that you might be focused, that could be processes and procedures, you guys, that could be discussed and amended, that could be certain, certain things we focus on when you get development reviews, site plan approvals, et cetera. What we should be looking at in terms of that. Anything in that sort of realm, things you guys do with the Planning Commission, we want to know, what are your three things that you think this group should be doing? Once everyone has a few minutes, and I'll stop talking, give you a second. Once everyone has a few minutes to do that, I'm going to take those along. Said while Danielle, which you know, of what the residents said, and then we'll have a discussion on kind of how these things compare, what you guys think should be going on, how it compares to each other, how it compares to what the residents said, so with that, five minutes or so.
You're not going to flash any multiple choice images on the screen for us?
We want to go from you, right?
Right.
You guys, who do this every month, live in the community, and so, the thought processes that you guys have insight that we need to learn about as consultants.
Thank you.
And keep in mind, too, that this can be as big or as, as small, you know, anything really that comes to mind that you find to be prudent, or, or, you know, within the short term, kind of three to five year time period.
I've hung out with you a few times.
I'm on one still, so. Lots of thoughts, but I just don't really. That's a piece of paper. Well, maybe that.
Earlier.
I know.
Maybe we can help articulate that as discussion, it's like, there's room for whole paragraphs, this is like a test.
Sorry, keep it simple. I know that some of the public respondents to the survey had a similar comment, and turned in pages and pages of blank papers.
Oh. Well, that's helpful.
They probably won't be able to read my handwriting anyways.
Picture of it online, then, if I can't read it.
This guy did, you're sitting third from the right. Did a lot from.
Like, all right.
All right, I'm cutting down, I'm making really short four-word sentences. Okay. That's my, my short. That's okay, we don't want to be here all night, so we're good.
I don't know, I just pick on my personal stuff, like what I.
Did you want us to, to, to answer that from our position as a person, or our position?
It says it's the Planning Commission.
As a planning commissioner, okay, that's what I thought.
But you're still a person.
Well, I understand, but when I'm sitting at home as a citizen, I have a different view than when I'm, you know, when I'm up here, I'm representing the township, not my own personal interests, so it's, like, there's, there better be two of you also. This is what people voted for, right, you're representing the people, and when you sit, when you sit up here, but, so, I mean, while I might disagree with an ordinance, I still have to vote following what the rule says, so that's why I'm, I guess I filled it out that way.
I did too, that's why it was hard to.
Yeah, because you're, because you have to, you have to think that through a little bit more carefully.
Things, yeah.
Yeah. Does anybody need to do all of them?
Well, that's not true, there are, there are a couple.
We can hash it out as we talk through it.
Okay.
Do we have everybody? Got one yet, okay. I'm still trying to think of the third, the third one.
We quiet when it's finished.
That's okay, I can't think of the third one, yeah, I just gave up after two.
It wouldn't help if we just all watched you write her.
No, it would not. I know, it was the end, I was like.
Make a note, Brian, do you think next time Jessica can bring an egg timer, and we could just, you know?
Okay. Alrighty, so I will briefly go over the results of the first survey. While Chris is kind of tallying up and categorizing what you guys wrote down. Quick respondent overview, survey number one, as you guys likely received in the mail as well, that was open from November to January, November twenty-one to January twenty-two. Little bit less than two thousand responses, which equates to ninety, or I'm sorry, nine point five percent of the township's total population. Just as a quick note, typically for what we see for respondent feedback, that percentage is, is excellent for, you know, the amount of residents that the township has, so just wanted to let you guys know that, that that response rate looks really good from our perspective. Eighteen percent of respondents are age forty to forty-nine, nineteen percent fifty to fifty-nine, twenty-five, sixty to sixty-nine, and eighteen, seventy, seventy-nine. Cascade Township's median age per two thousand nineteen census data, ACS five-year estimates is forty-two point five years old. So basically, the breakdown of responses that we've seen per age group is pretty consistent with how, you know, the township ages, age brackets kind of break out as a whole. Oh, and then this graphic here, of course, shows ninety-seven percent are residents, seventy-nine percent are property owners, fifty-seven percent work full-time or part-time, thirty-two percent retired, which, again, is pretty consistent with the data we've, we've, we've been receiving, and then seven percent business owners. I should also note, too, that as part of the strategic plan process, we plan to embark in a specific outreach to business owners specifically through this process, so that's kind of a group that we're going to be hearing a bit more from in the next coming weeks. Households, forty-seven percent have two people in their household, again, pretty consistent with the age group data we've been seeing, and folks who may be retired or have adult children that live outside of the home, or maybe college-age children that are home part-time, eighteen percent of four people, again, consistent with your, you know, thirty to forty-year-olds kind of family-forming age, maybe perhaps middle school, elementary school.
The numbers on the bottom, those, those correspond to a zone, is that correct?
Bottom of the graph?
Yeah.
That is number people per household.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking it was an area, okay, yeah.
You're ahead of me, though, right here, so I'll talk about. Yeah, perfect segue. So respondent location, we thought it was imperative through this process to break out the township in different geographic areas that makes sense, that were kind of parted out through either, you know, built characteristics, or roads that are important dividers, the river, of course, airport, important features like that. Most of the respondents we received are in Area Two, which is that, like, dark maroon color, which is just east of the, the river to the north side of the township, followed closely by Area One, which is that pink color in the upper left-hand corner there at twenty-two percent, and then it kind of tapers off quite a bit, but of course, that's, you know, that area is one and two are kind of where you're going to see a little bit higher population, areas eight, nine, maybe a little bit more commercial-oriented. Three is, you know, where you get many or more rural areas, six is, of course, where the airport is and so forth. So that's why I should note that less than one percent are area number nine, but we did note that I, what was it, three houses that are in? That, something like that, two or three.
It's sort of the southeast corner, and then there's one person who is tucked between Burton and the highway, and they're in the township too. Those are all the people that live in that area.
So that's why you see a low response rate there, but given the low number of people, I think we received a hundred percent responses for Area Nine, so. Good news there. Of those responses, we received.
Just a question on the responses.
Sure.
So there was mail-in and online, do you have any breakdown of how many were mail, how many were online?
The mail-in, I believe we received about five to seven hundred of those, and then the rest were just people who went online and selected the survey option or the Q R code option, and then went straight to the online source. But when we, when we were working with township staff, all of those kind of got funneled into online, so township staff was implementing the paper surveys onto the online platform.
Oh, that was my second, so the quantity, the qualitative data that was put on the paper was typed in, or?
Correct.
Manually by staff?
Yeah.
Okay, was there any way to differentiate multiple from the same house, like paper and online? I know that was a question that came up before.
Or multiple online from the same house. So, we are able to track I P addresses through Survey Monkey, we didn't see that there was any consist, inconsistent data where somebody was trying to skew results, let's say, in doing the survey five hundred times. So we did keep an eye on that and tried to track it, but as far as making sure if somebody only took it once on one platform or the other, we did keep it open for as many times as anyone really wanted to take it. So, to kind of offer that, that flexibility, or if somebody maybe dawned on, something dawned on them after the fact, and they could go back and put it in.
We tend to be on the side of a lot of my multiple household, so to do things, and just testing, or sort of tracking for the really bizarre stuff, that maybe a bot or something like that. But with these surveys, frankly, we're trying to use as much space as possible, and if someone really wants to spam the survey, we'd prefer to just like, hello, why didn't you spam the survey? What are you, clearly you're advocating for something, let's talk about it, right? Because, you know, we haven't really, in our experience, seen a lot of people who are acting in that faith with these things.
So of the township-wide, two thousand responses that we received, the top assets, number one, include the township's natural scenery, of course, not surprising, number two, safety from crime, and three, proximity to most areas within Greater Grand Rapids. So I think the, one of the big takeaways here is that Cascade is perfectly situated, both geographically, where you can pretty much get anywhere you need to go along the highways, or in, in the city or in the country. But then you also have that aspect of the, you know, rolling hills, the river, the woods, and, and all of those things that kind of make Cascade unique in a, in a great place and desirable place for people to live. Top issues of concern, I put total here, and this means just total of the, every response that we've received. Too much traffic speeding, lack of a village area, too much speeding in residential neighborhoods, lack of river-like preservation efforts, and lastly, too much traffic congestion along townships' major roads. So of course, you know, three out of five of these top concerns per residence relate to traffic and road safety and congestion. So as part of this process, we will also engage the Kent County Road Commission and other applicable entities to make sure that, you know, these issues of concern are heard and they're addressed, and, you know, we can work with them to figure out, you know, what, what is solutions that makes sense. Okay. So top issue, and then we pulled out data of top issues of concern by age brackets, and then by geography, which is kind of why we separated out the township into those nine geographic areas, so we could pull specific points of data from that. I just circled some of the ones that are a bit more interesting, those who are aged eighteen to twenty-nine of, are noted that they are not as concerned with too much traffic speeding along major roads, which is pretty consistent, you know, with younger, younger folks that I, you know, not surprising their lack of a village area came in at number four, for those folks aged seventy-plus, which was lower than the rest of the age groups where it was in the top three of their concerns. Lack in river, river, river and lake preservation efforts came in at number one for younger folks. You know, I also think that's pretty consistent data with younger folks and, you know, environmentally conscious and you know, being more concerned about the longevity. You know, I also think that's pretty consistent data with younger folks and, you know, environmentally conscious and, um, you know, being more concerned about the longevity of those kinds of things. Um, and although interestingly decreased safety, um, from crime came in at number two for those folks aged eighteen to twenty nine, um, which I thought was kind of an interesting data point there.
Cause their cars are out in the driveway getting broke into and the parents are parking in the garage.
Could be. That's a very good point. The, and that happened to me when I was in college, actually, at my parents' house. They stole a portable DVD player, which is like, we even use this anymore. Top issues of concern by geography, um, too much speeding came in at number four, um, for group seven or area seven, I should say, which is that dark purple right adjacent to the river. Um, that I pulled out because that was a little bit lower of a concern than other groups, um, where it kind of landed in the top three. Uh, lack of village, um, came in at number five, which is significantly lower, um, than all the other geographic, um, areas that we had pulled out. Um, and number five is that lighter purple that you see towards the south. Um, too much speeding in neighborhoods, um, for group or area three, um, that came in at seven, which is lower than all the other groups, um, interestingly. Um, so those folks in, in seven, I guess, don't seem to have too much of a concern with people speeding along their, in their neighborhoods. Area five, which is also the light purple noted, um, lack of river and lake preservation efforts, um, as their number one concern, um, which unsurprisingly, because they're located along the river as well. Um, that, that, uh, decreased safeties, number one for those folks in area six, um, which is the light, or I'm sorry, that's the orange where the airport is located. Um, which also kind of interesting data point there. And, uh, loss of character due to rapid growth and development, um, came in at the number four concern, which is higher than the other geot, um, geographic areas that we pointed out, um, for area three, which is, the, the blue area where you're going to have more of the, the rural areas and, you know, larger lot, um, homes and things like that. Um, so of course that, that data point is pretty consistent with those folks who may be concerned that there's, you know, sprawl creeping into their areas.
Are you going to share this information with the parks committee? Cause I, you know, I'm looking at this and I came from the parks committee. And you're noticing, you know, that there are certain areas that say, hey, parks are more important than others. And it's probably because they don't have a park in that area. So that would probably be some good information to share with that committee.
When's our, when's our park committee one of these?
Twenty four.
At least share that line item with them so that they can look at the zones and say, hey, you know.
I'm sorry, one month?
This month. Will be, will be a parks committee, um, our.
Basically, uh, camping out at Cascade Township for the next month, couple of weeks with all our workshops we've got going on. Um, and then, um, Mike, all I think is he also sits on the advisory committee as well. So he's been a great resource to also kind of pass information and let us know what the parks group is talking about and, and so forth. But we will be meeting with them face to face. Um, Cascade's top priorities, um, this is the, uh, two thousand, uh, whole, uh, residents that responded to this, uh, creating a downtown village, um, has come in consistently as number one cons- uh, priority. Um, Chris and I have been in conversations with the DDA, um, several times thus far, and we've still continue, plan to continue working with them through this process to kind of, sort through what that downtown may look like and how to get there, and then also seeking input from residents, um, prior to that as well.
And of course, you guys would have a role in that as well, on the planning itself inside. So that would be a, uh, multi, not jurisdictional, but multi-commission effort, which goes to some of the comments.
Nope, you're good. Um, not raising taxes, number two, not super surprising there. Um, but I think that that's kind of something that we can pull out through this process. And perhaps that's something that we can get from residents for our second survey push is, you know, here are the projects that we've identified. Would you, um, support paying taxes to support this type of project? So that, um, you know, we can kind of increase that level of transparency. And so the public is aware of where are my taxes going? What does that look like? And, and that, um, that will also kind of be an additional campaign through, um, this process and the township board and everything as well. Um, allocating, planning residential growth in appropriate areas, um, this top three priority, um, really, um, speaks to this group in specific of kind of figuring out that balance between, you know, where do we support growth and development of Cascade? Where do we keep it? You know, where it's perhaps, I don't know, more residential oriented or larger lot subs or, you know, uh, more, I don't know, rural residential, things like that. Um, and then of course, though, planning its own excited plays a huge key role in that. Creating a community gathering space, which that kind of, um, very closely, uh, ties to downtown village and the DDA group plus parks group. Um, and particularly this group as well. And then improving existing parks, again, um, something that we'll be definitely discussing with the parks group and they're in the middle. Well, I shouldn't say in the middle, the beginning stages of updating their parks and rec plans. So this kind of all comes at a great time that we can, you know, have these two plans work together, um, in conjunction with one another with similar goals and objectives and things like that. Um, top priorities by age, I just pulled out a couple of things, planning residential growth, um, to appropriate areas. Um, that came in a bit lower for those aged thirty to forty nine. Improving existing parks, um, came in a bit higher for that same age group, um, which is very possible that they, um, you know, may have younger families in that age group that have younger kids who are in elementary school age or middle school age that use that park system or bike trail system quite frequently. Um, cleaning up the Thornapple River came in at number three, those aged eighteen to twenty nine. Um, of course, very similar with their lake and river preservation efforts, um, top concern. Um, planning residential growth to appropriate areas, um, that came in at number seven, which is lower, um, a prior, a lower priority for, um, those who are in, uh, area four, which is that, that tan color on the bottom right there. Improving existing parks, um, kind of was quite a bit higher in that same area. So it's very possible, like you mentioned commissioner role in that, there may, they may not have many access to parks in that area and that could be a priority for them. Encouraging commercial development to appropriate areas, um, that came in, uh, a little bit higher for those in area seven. Perhaps, uh, that could be due to them living within close proximity to commercial areas. Streetscapes, um, that's, this is kind of a new one that we've been seeing, but we did see pop up quite frequently, um, as a whole, um, in the survey, um, responses that we received. Um, and that came in as a top three priority for those in area number two, which is that, that dark maroon color. Um, and then so that would be improving the township's existing streetscapes. Um, and then of course, cleaning up the Thornapple River that came in at, um, a ti- as a top three priority for number five, um, which is that light purple to the south, um, which is quite a bit higher than, um, the other geographic areas. Oh, yeah.
I, could you go back to that slide just a quick sec- second? Just a couple of observations. I am assuming that the streetscapes, number two, it would be interesting to see a breakdown of how many people wanted an improvement of the streetscapes related to crossing the Thornapple River at Cascade Road, cause I have a feeling that that might have impacted that. Uh, I think that if they improve the streetscape, it'll actually improve the access to, uh, the downtown area. I think there might be, um, a little bit of that. And then I, noticing the, the pedestrian facilities, I see that that is pretty high on everybody's list there, right? Or is ten the least? It says the lowest, so it's, it's actually low on everybody's, except.
Sorry, I should clarify that we had like twenty five things on this list, so ten is not like the bottom.
That's true. Right, but, uh, it's interesting that, uh, five is the area that had the, the highest rating for that. Zone five, so, which is. I would have thought four, I would have thought four would have tied with them.
They don't have much out there. That's why they want.
Well, right, but I, but neither does zone four. So I'm, I'm surprised that, I would have thought that that would have been more even.
Yeah.
It'd be to, for zone four and five, I thought, I, you know, I think you'd see a more even response.
Five was, it might be kind of a hot topic, cause five had, remember, a plan for the trail to go, um, down Thornapple River up to meet up with that sidewalk on Thornapple River Drive, and then it was stopped.
I think you're referring to zone seven and eight.
Well, and if you look, uh, streetscapes.
Oh, you're right. I am. Sorry.
Streetscapes was high in zone two. They want a crossing over the river.
Right, right.
Cause that bridge is.
That's, that's what I'm saying. I think, I, you know, you can read between these lines a little bit if you've listened to the comments over these years, you can see the direction.
Or it's just there or on Cascade Road a lot, and it's just ugly.
Well, there's probably some of that where the flower pot is blocking the view of somebody stuck a Christmas tree in it. Can't turn right safely. Now, you know, the road commission doesn't stop for red lights during the night, so you have to make sure you have clear vision, cause they just drive right through them.
Uh, I'm also wondering too, that maybe it is lower on the list for area four, because it kind of lies on that side of the river that, you know, it tends to be more rural, and then maybe the other side is a little bit less so. So it, perhaps that's just a lesser priority for them, because they have just a different geographic.
No, you're right. The content, the, the population concentration in zone five per acre is probably much higher than it is in zone four.
Yeah. So I would imagine that their priorities for, you know, bikes, bike trails and, you know, bike lanes, whatever, might be a bit higher than lower population areas.
Yes.
That's a great observation.
The group just needs to be able to read, read the data appropriately when they work on this.
Um, so then go it, moving into next step. So you guys are kind of aware of what we've got on the docket. Um, of course, planning commission today, uh, you guys are our first workshop that we have planned. The township board, uh, was supposed to be on Wednesday, but they couldn't fit us in their schedule, so that got pushed back a little bit. So I'm thinking that will likely be either next week or the week after that. DDA is the fifteenth, um, township staff will likely be a little bit towards the end of March, the same day that we do township board. I forgive me, this is a little bit outdated, because I received this information this afternoon when I, after I put this slide together. Uh, parks committee, March twenty fourth, and then business leaders, we're looking at likely, um, late March for that. So we can make sure to get, um, everyone ample time, um, to schedule on their calendars. And then of course, the workshops is going to look very similar to kind of what we're doing tonight for, for all of these groups. And then lastly, um, so from all of the information that we received through the workshops and through all of the data that we got from the survey and all the resident feedback, we took all of those results and basically condensed those into four public focus groups, which we have advertised to the public. And that has also been implemented, implemented on a postcard and sent out to, um, the list that, of those folks who reached out and said, hey, I'm interested in be, in being contacted further. Um, so we have emails and addresses for those folks. Um, so we've identified four major categories of which these, um, survey results have been, uh, received. Number one, downtown and village, um, that will be on March twenty fourth, um, I believe, six to seven thirty PM in this room. Parks and Trails, uh, March twenty ninth, growth management and preservation, April fourteenth, and then road safety and streetscapes, April twenty first. Yeah.
Approximately, how many people did you get that were interested in?
Believe it was over six hundred.
Yeah, it was actually.
Wow.
This room might not be big enough.
Yes.
Awesome.
It's a, it's a good problem to have, but we are, uh, going to reach out directly to people that said they were interested. And we're trying to get some, do you tell me we're serious about that?
Right.
Um, then whether they're all going to come to all of them. Uh, we're also going to offer a option for each of them, um, you know, so that people can respect the home and the thing, and that will hopefully, uh, A, a lot more participation while also this room over country, but like, um, we were actually very pleasantly surprised, but also a little bit, uh, overwhelmed by the number of people who said, yes, I would like to come to a focus group. Uh, so we'll, um, we'll be working through that, but I'm glad to work with you. Yes.
That's a good problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And if you have something that's kind of similar to like an open house format or something like that, it doesn't seem as, you know, daunting if six hundred people show up in a one place at one time, especially during COVID times.
Yeah. So March twenty fourth is right around the corner. How do you engage people to let them know to come to the focus group?
So, um, it's on the connecting cascade.com project website. It's also on the township calendar. And the township staff has also, uh, put together, um, a postcard and that postcard got sent to everybody who submitted their address. Um, and then also an electronic version of that postcard via email to everybody who, um, told us that they were interested in attending.
If you would have wanted to attend, you would have gotten both of these things.
I might have done.
Postcard.
Yeah. I believe the postcard was sent out last.
Yeah, uh, I probably have already.
Oh, did you receive one?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I'm glad.
I'm planning on going to Parks and Trails.
Good. Uh, well, we'll be there. Um, and then so basically all of this, um, big public engagement push and with all of the results that we received from you folks, um, through our six workshops, um, those will be, um, put together, um, and, um, calibrated to start forming the overall strategic plan goals and objectives. And then from that point, you know, the actual content of drafting the plan will kind of go move through from there. Um, and then of course, along the way, we'll be planning to check in, um, you know, with a second survey, um, with residents to kind of validate these goals. Um, and then perhaps maybe an open house or something like that, kind of depending on, on how, uh, things shake out a little bit. Um, so that's all I had for the presentation. If anyone has any questions, yeah.
Question for you. I do, I sit on the parks committee and, um, I know they have an outside agency that's working on updating the parks plan. So how are you working with that company as well, since you're doing all of this data and all these focus groups? How are those two things going to be like merged together at some point, since they're actually working on the parks plan?
So the one who's been is Mike Grease, who's on the advisor committee, works for the company and works for the company doing the parks plan. And thus communicates with us in both of those roles.
Okay.
So when we, and when the advisory committee meets, which is basically every two weeks, we have representatives of both groups in that meeting, uh, along with, uh, supervisor, township manager. And so we're, uh, we're coordinated actually very closely on that. They've already done some really great public outreach, uh, in addition to this. And so we have really, really cool, uh, public feedback already now, which is kind of formal.
Okay.
Both plans are action oriented, obviously, so there's going to be a lot.
Right. And that's why I was wondering, I mean, as a township, we're paying for two independent companies to work on two plans that are kind of merging into, you know, many people's top picks for things that they're worried about or concerned about. So I was just wondering, I hope they're not working in silos and that you guys are working together to be able to make sure.
Yeah, um, I would say, we'll see what the final sort of roles look like on both sides, but there may be things that are even combining several factors. Cause they're going to be, clearly there's going to be.
Okay. Cause I think, just my opinion in the township, I think there's been a lot of silos historically, which I think is a lot of the problem. So just, I bet you did.
And not only that, well, I guess I'll go in this a second, cause well, I should probably, it's time to go through with this.
I don't know if there was other questions for, sorry.
All right. So this was interesting because there's definitely overlap with what Danielle presented to the public. And, but there's also areas where there's not. Your number one thing you guys reported that actually, I think came out more times than there are sheets here. So we will, uh, put different aspects of this twice, um, but I kind of merged it into, um, approval processes and communications and training. Putting all that into kind of one area, there was a lot of that. You got, a number of you guys said you want things to be faster, more efficient, more business friendly. But you also want to make sure you're communicating with the other boards and commissions, other aspects of the township, the DDA, parks, we already brought this up tonight. And then, uh, trains, training for you folks, probably for the CBA, things like that as well. Um, that'll, I kind of put that together and that, that was, cause that came up so often, that's kind of number one, is the process and procedures stuff. Obviously, the public didn't bring that up, but that's because it's sort of inside baseball, I think the public would know about. But if you guys can improve in that area, um, then you can obviously improve on things the public is talking about. Uh, and I'm sure Brian has some thoughts, uh, as he's worked with the, there were zoning ordinance on things that can be approved in that regard, processes as well. We have a number of recommendations that we can make in that area, uh, how to streamline things, how to make sure you're communicating. And obviously the training session, which, um, you know, could, could actually be an action item, right? Uh, for you guys to, uh, you know, bringing someone to do the training sessions that we actually do, that's not a sales pitch, but do that. There's also citizen planner through MSU, that could be one of your action items for you folks to do stuff like that. And, and the communication, so there's all sorts of different ways to do that. There are ways to do that that are in conflict with the efficiency thing, like we aim over the DEA for approval as well as you guys, but there's ways to do it that are not in conflict. But there's ways to do it that are not in conflict with efficiency. So I think all that stuff, we can, we can come up with a list of suggestions in that area as we develop your action plan. That was number one. Number two was actually about parks and trails, which goes to what you guys just talked, what we just talked about, right? And then we also saw that with the public, that there's a lot of affection for the parks and trails that you have, but also hey, we could better, we could make bigger, we could make it better. And I included in that the gathering place idea that was brought up that was in here. There are also a couple of specific things brought up, including pathway and butt trick and the walkway over the river, which is around a couple of times tonight. Which are the kind of things that we're hoping to get with the public in the next round, as far as the specifics of what they're looking for. Obviously, you saw a lot of someone passing trails in the public feedback as well. So there's clearly overlap there, yes.
Can I ask you, you mentioned pathway and butt trick. What, what are you referring to specifically to butt trick?
Says, and I'm not sure whose form it was, it says pathway south of Butrick.
Okay.
So I wasn't exactly sure with that before too.
South and east of us, that's where I was going. Let's kind of get down farther in the south part of the township.
Right.
It's like south of all Butrick, yeah.
Getting down the snow, coming down around the river, getting a loop.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, I think that's going to be clearly that sort of next phase of the trail system is going to be partners, right? And as far as, because the strategic plan affects based maybe plan a trail in this part of the township, but we're trying to again get it where our furors so we're not so that we are effective, right? One of the things that's important about strategic planning is coming up with a smaller number of things to do well by focusing on what is anyway. The number three thing you guys have is about matching ordinances to your community vision. So that would be some consistency between zoning ordinance and master plan. Potentially, taking a look at the master plan, I noticed that old, to make sure it fits your vision right now. I think that probably also goes with the efficient approval processes, right? Because you guys don't want to be having to say no to something you like, you don't want to be having to say yes to something you don't like, because the way the ordinances work, so taking with it zoning ordinance and the master plan in that regard. Number four, we'll talk about downtown. Hopefully brought that up. Obviously, that's very, was very prominent in the in the public and give feedback and that's, as we said, a multi-prom effort to turn what you guys have in the village. Anyway, downtown is compared here to Gaslight Village. Other people say, don't compare us to those two, we're not going to be like that with ourselves. So I'd like to get away from that discussion and just say, what can we do to make the Cascade Village the best it can be, right? But that's, that was definitely brought up. The next one on the list was the environment. Water in particular was brought up and then, of course, does also guide the public. And that again is something that can be addressed through ordinances, addressed through your master plan, land use decisions in the watershed. Weapon protection and that sort of thing. So very relevant to what you guys do, okay? And then the last thing brought up was traffic, which public brought up, was brought up by you guys, but lower, lower party, lower party wants in all of you. But it was, that was more a high part of the community. Road commission, of course, that's relevant to you guys when it comes to land use decisions, access management decisions. Road design decision, when you get to influence those, fortunately, the township stops all the time, but when you get to influence them. So that's obviously an important one. Couple of things I noticed that came up with the public feedback that you guys did not bring up. And some of these may be baked into your answers, but I think the biggest one was the priority number three that the public brought out. Go back to that slide, which was allocating and planning residential growth in appropriate areas. Now, you have a master plan that designates growth versus preservation. But I don't know, it's one of the things we'll be talking about in our workshop with the public is, okay, what do we mean by appropriate areas? As you guys know, some people are NIMBYs and some people are bananas, which is build absolutely nothing anywhere, anywhere near anyone. You heard that one? But some people may have more nuance towards to, hey, this is where we build, where the infrastructure don't want to build, we have farmland and natural features for all that impact, but that's a key planning commission decision. And that's another area where evaluating where your master plan is at now, making sure you're comfortable with where it's at. Or if you're not, means you change it, so you can implement that. It's going to be really important, so. That was part of the public and I think we would probably want to make sure that carries forward this process, unless you guys have some sort of specific perspective. Also, it's related to that was number six, which is about commercial development in appropriate areas. That is somewhat related to downtown, but it's also related to some of the other things you guys did earlier tonight, you know, industrial development. Twenty eighth street, which is beyond the scope of the strategic plan, but one of the things we're going to talk about at twenty eighth street is what on earth do we want the future of that? You may have, you probably have the healthiest stretch of twenty eighth street in the region. But corridor has become troubled in a lot of ways and you're probably not immune to that unless we plan ahead, right? So
I think old twenty eighth street should be a focus too.
That's a good point, and that's relevant to the downtown. And I think there's some things there that we should probably talk about.
That's your Gaslight Village right there.
Yeah, I think there's, there's something to that because that's not, it can be, it doesn't have to use a major thoroughfare. It's been bypassed already, that's why it's old twenty eighth street. So this is, this is the type of thing where they get into, or at least in the strategic plan identified, that needs to be the next planning DEA development focus area. So this is the, this is the type of thing we're trying to get out of this process, right? Yeah, and then, and then they talked, the, the public, as we noted, also talked about streetscapes, pedestrian facilities, which goes into the trails thing. And really is, is sort of context dependent. That was kind of the other one that maybe didn't necessarily come up with you guys, but did come up with the public. Any thoughts on that? Did I miss any of the comparisons? So does characterize anything you guys put down or miss anything?
I think there's something that I've seen that we've missed that I think in all of our planning, we need to look at, how do we make Cascade a better community? And I don't mean safer or more restaurants. I mean, there's a real sense of community. I'm going to say it, there's a real sense of community here. Right? I've lived here almost my whole life. There's not that sense here. You have Fourth of July and that's it. I mean, we need, you know, they've got beers on the bridge. We should have something like that here. They have art festivals and art fairs and chili cook offs and, I mean, we don't.
And the stuff that we have had, because I think last year, maybe it was last year, it was added the cornhole tournament was a big thing in that area, but is is spearheaded by private citizens within the community that are putting in a lot of their own time and effort to make those things possible.
Well, and we as a, as a governing body should make it easy for people that want to do like, hey, you want to do something like that? Listen.
We have a process.
A simple process and we can help and we will help with volunteers and, you know, we'll put our feelings, I mean, we need to encourage that.
You also probably need a place for it. Or we talked about the central gathering place idea and, you know, it's like his facility and
That's where everything it really is, is between here or the, yeah, or the parking lot of the, what's that ball place? Old family fair. It's one of those really, or DNW parking lot. That's about all that we have.
More long term, there are ways to rethink that complex that could create a gathering place, it's more developable space and more downtown feel there. Obviously, that's the type of thing where you're involving developers and you're investing, they're investing money and you're investing money. You know, doing something on the order of what happened in Ada, right?
Right.
But if you're going to do something that may be spot, that or old twenty eighth street.
Right out here in front of the, the library.
But that decision has to be made. And that decision either needs to be made probably during this process or as an action, a high level action item of this process that has to happen. Because I think we've, we've heard during this process like, this is, this works, this works, this works, but no one is, we haven't yet narrowed down to, yes, it's this one. Because if you don't concentrate on one of those sites as your central gathering place where these events happen and the investment is built out from that, you're not going to do it. Because it's going to be, well, this is over here, that's over there, so this is not happening at all. So I think that's one where we really if we can't focus it in this process, it needs to be like one of the next steps that we do is to focus that discussion.
A lot of things about events. If you, well, I'm just thinking, you know, downtown, the beers in the fridge, all these events, a lot of them take, take place at, at Old Leonard Field and the covered bridge area or, you know, in that, in that vicinity. And if, if let me just throw out a hypothetical here. If the township was to, to build an amphitheater on the side of the Thorn Apple River, you know, piece of property that had owned near Tassel Park and had events that took place every three weeks, like a band came in and stuff. People would flock to that and, and then you would have a different response after a year of that. But yes, there was a community feel in that area. Just like if you did it right here at the library, then the response would probably be that there was a, you know, although we have a community gathering place, it's by the library. Because that's where everybody congregated for those events. But I think that, that, that special event, you know, makes a big, it, it kind of leads that in a big way, if you can, if you can organize something like that. You know, that, that kind of makes the, the downtown gathering area, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to construct one as much as we just need to make it, get the organization to to start, you know, creating those, that, whatever that event is, and that will become the gathering place.
Good question. I did not put this on any of my surveys as a private citizen. And this is maybe a question or maybe a not so nice comment as a citizen, not as somebody more of the commission. But is there going to be any way to address the look of Cascade? And by that, I mean, we talked about the polling where that whole section and when, as a private citizen, when Starbucks came in there and redid the facade of several of those buildings there, it was like, oh, wow, they're updating that. Oh, no, they're just doing a couple. They updated the rest, but made them all look the same. And, you know, I just know from some other areas that they have a look, that there's certain standards that are expected, that if you are going to update things, you need to make them fit. All of our strip malls, we have lots of strip malls in Cascade. All of them, the three major ones in the last couple of years have all had facelifts and none of them look anything alike. And I just find that disappointing as a citizen, that I think that it would look better and be more of a community if we did have a certain look to requirements for facelifts for these strip malls instead of everyone, one looks a little more industrial. One doesn't know what it looks like between the Starbucks section and the other sections, none of it matches. It just, as a citizen, it drives me crazy because I'm like, it's so nice to drive through and see, you know, tree line streets where people have to plant trees and they have to have, we have sign ordinance, thank God. Because that would be a huge ugly piece that we, we have already thankfully. Because there would be a lot of taking advantage of that as well, I think. But now I think we went for the signs to now maybe we can do a little more upgrading with some other things long term.
Well, I was just going to say, you, you made the comment about Starbucks and being different than the other buildings there, and I think that's because they're up, they're under individual.
Oh, but I'm seeing like
I, I know you're comparing it to the other, other development.
It doesn't matter if you're Walmart and you want to come into some townships, you're going to look a certain way if you want to do business there.
Right. And, and what I was going to say is that when that project was developed, it had, I believe, and I could be mistaken on this, but I believe it had to have a certain look that at the time was required in the village. Just like I think Cascade Christian Church, the Centennial Hall project, when that was redeveloped, they had to have the peaked roofs. And that was the look that Cascade was going for for a while. And they had such an outpouring responsive or cry, if you will, from developers and things that it was, it was making it so expensive to do construction that, that it wasn't happening. So I think the township stepped away from that policy. I don't, I, I could be wrong on this, but I thought that there was a period of time where there was a, there was a specific model that had to be fed. And maybe, maybe we, we've tried two extremes and we need to be kind of be in the middle more. And I know we have a village design review board, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Because in the B one, we do have a whole section of building design requirements in that B one zoning district. So that's probably some of what you're referring to. You know, specific requirements for facades or how much glass or brick has to be there, certain types of roofs. So in the B one, there are those design requirements there. That's something we can look at if we want to add more or take less.
Two strip malls on twenty eighth street, both were refaced within the last couple of years.
And if it in the B two, then those don't have any requirements then. So that only the B one has the specific designer.
Because they're outside of the, outside of
Outside of the village, the village area has those.
And I think that maybe that's part of the problem is when we're talking, if we consider the library, this front yard, more of our gathering place. Some people think of that as the village, which we're talking the two places right across both streets here.
So would you be thinking that the village should be enlarged?
I don't know. I mean, and that's what it would take, if that's where our gathering place is.
The architectural standards need to be extended to twenty eighth street or twenty eighth street can postpone architectural standards back to district. Maybe we'll get our forcing village ones, if there's still, if there are still on books. But and this, this would be something where you'd have to consider how this impacts your desire to have efficient approval process.
Right.
Because it's likely that those changes over that shopping center did comply with the architectural standards, but don't necessarily match the next. Both comply with the standards, but if you look at a next to each other, they'll and that's where you, this objective opinion will come in like the village design approval or come to you guys or come to the DEA for that. So these are the push and pull you have to go through. I'm reminded of downtown Holland where you did some zoning work, where they had a they have this long list of architectural standards and at the end it said, or you can do every one, if you just come to the planning commission, we like it.
There's something else that kind of came to mind too, as we're talking through this is like how we address eight changing trends in the way people shop, in the way they live, in the way they dine, and how we can implement those changes within our strategic plan. You know, to address maybe perhaps high vacant commercial rates or office buildings or, you know, things like that too, that I think is going to become increasingly apparent in many communities.
They guys have some office parks. I know some of them already moved towards more executive model. It is likely that that land use becomes less of demand as we move forward after pandemic, at least working at home. So that makes it something to look at too, outside of those very visible areas, you know, some that are not so visible.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not privy to what the master plan calls for, but perhaps that's something that we can take a look at through this process to make sure. Yes, thank you.
Is available.
Just in the last few, two years, we've seen a major shift towards outdoor dining for restaurants. I mean, personally, my wife and I prefer to dine outdoors. The planning commission gets, you know, requests for approvals for outdoor dining a lot more now than ever in the past.
Yeah, and, and again.
That need to come to you guys.
Style of those two is so varied throughout the area, you know, I mean.
We've talked about that.
And, and so again, like you, when you talked about changing for the times, it's like, that's something I don't think anybody ever thought about, but they are, they're definitely different.
Yeah, there's no way we would have known, I guess, right at that point.
I noticed one, actually it was in Ada. So one beautiful day on Saturday, right? It happened to be in Ada and they had, their, one of the restaurants had their big overhead doors open. Which is interesting because I know of a number of zoning ordinances that do not allow outdoor dining before April first. And that's, I don't know what you guys just talked, look at that, but that's one thing that you could sort of make it more business.
I hope ours is year round because people are doing.
Why, why is the township telling you that when it's sixty degrees on a March day and you can execute outdoor dining and then pull it back in before it snows again? Right? If you're, if the business is ready to do that, apply stop.
Or even if it's not, I mean, Thorne Up Brewery had those igloos, which was very cool.
Temporary use for.
I mean, but, but absolutely. I mean, why not? I mean, there's, all of us would like to, I mean, it's kind of.
I think, I think those are more attractive than two by fours and OSB.
Especially after Saturday night.
One thing we talked about earlier was a village center. And I know my wife and I like to go into Ada, frankly, to the old schoolhouse area. Where, for a lot of reasons, you know, it's kind of, it's a park atmosphere, it's on the river. to the old schoolhouse area where, for a lot of reasons, uh, you know, it's kind of, it's a park atmosphere, it's on the river. Uh, sometimes we have dinner right across the street at Zatens. Uh, when we were grandkids, we always take them to the, the play park there. They'd love that. Uh, they've got an amphitheater there, they've got some nice walkways, uh, nice sculptures and all that. I mean, it's like the heart of the community. And that used to be the back door of the community. You know, you didn't even see the river for a long time because there's all these junky buildings along there. They cleared all, all that out, made it in, into a village. And it's really quite nice.
Legacy park.
You have all of the elements that they have. It's just about putting them together here.
Yeah.
Right? You have the river, right?
And the township already has property on the river.
There, Tassel Park.
It's huge.
But yes, then, then I guess the big. Right? That they are fortunate that the state highway bypasses the village, whereas you guys have the busy regional corridor on our left. That's the one planning challenge. I know that's why, you know, twenty. Shopping center with the bowling place, but these are all disparate.
Right, but I would also, I would also say that, that one of the big elements that we don't have that they had is they had a developer that was willing to buy that whole piece of property and lay it all out.
Someone buys the entire village.
Right, so the, so that the, the waterfront was just the township's development. You know, all the streets, they're all privately owned and privately, that whole area is private right there. So, I mean, that's kind of a little different than.
That's true. Although we have one thing that we may talk to DDA in this process about a strategic acquisition, which is easier said than done. But then, but if they have resources, right, and being able to say, all right, we are the landlord of this building now. And we can decide what happens next. And I know that, I know there's specific properties where if they, if DDA came with cash, it's a no. Right? But this is where, yes, it's extremely fortunate when you have a developer that will literally buy the entire village and then do that. But there are opportunities here, um, with the fact that you guys are, you guys do have an advantage in having a DDA. The TIFs off Target, Meyer and Walmart. And yes, should invest in that area, but does, probably doesn't need as much investment in that area. It's just, so you have some opportunities. We're talking with you today about that. But this again, that's gotta be a multi-pronged approach. You guys have a role. And, uh, I mean, and, and it sounds like there's going to be some post-strategic plan action items, making these decisions and these calls. Where are we going to prioritize? Because we have to focus on something.
Any other questions? Do you go to slide eleven for me?
Sure.
As we only have eight planning commission members and, and one to be appointed. Um, can y'all look at this map and just, we'll go down the line. I just want to see how we're represented. So Timmy, if you can, tell me what number you're in.
May help, apparently I can't do it.
Two, Alan.
Number one.
Scott.
Two.
This is Cascade Road.
Ralph.
One.
Two.
Okay, I'm in seven. Deirdre?
Um, I think I'm in eight, depending on the side of the road. It looks like I'm in eight.
Ben?
Two. Two.
Two.
Two.
So we'll say these are not equal population regions.
Well, being on your advisory committee, I know what they are. So, um, let me, uh, this is helpful. Thank you. What's that?
What the numbers were that you just took.
Yeah, sure. Uh, let's see here. Two, one, two, one, seven, eight, two, two. But two's a, a big one.
A huge.
Yeah.
One is a big one.
Population wise.
So I think we're actually.
We, we need to find somebody that's south of ninety-six or east of Buttrick.
Right.
Right. Nope, nope. So, no, so, so, south of ninety-six or east of Buttrick would be the, the area that we don't have any representation in, at all.
I'll provide it to the supervisor. Brian, can you provide that to Ben as well? So, you know, because he vets the candidates that come through. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send a copy of this map or anything if you needed to, a bigger size.
I'll get it for you on Friday.
Excellent question, Mr. Price.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
The next meeting in March, so we have more of these to talk about.
So there won't be, so there won't be one on Friday?
Probably not.
Somebody sent me a meeting invite earlier to.
Yes, because I noticed that I only had them marked for the fourth.
Got it.
And we decided on the second and fourth, so I must have forgot for twenty twenty-two. Anyway, um, I will be sending out an email likely tomorrow, once I confirm with Ben and Grace that they're cool with the cancellation.
All right, cool.
Otherwise, we'd make you take an hour of your morning to recap this. It's not for you. So we'll have other things to talk about.
I, I do serve as, uh, the ex officio member from the planning commission. So if anybody has anything that we brought to it. I find myself, you know, about three quarters in the meetings, I think, yeah, maybe a little less. Uh, but, yeah, I'll send notes to Grace where I can. So, um, if, if there's anything that you want brought to this, uh, let me know. All right, awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome. Brian, do we need to approve the minutes from this closed session? I noticed that it's not stated in the agenda, but.
Oh, that's, we could, maybe kind of wrapping it into the approval, but we can do that under any other business. It's just quicker approvals. I forgot to mention it when we were approving.
Yeah, I wouldn't, we'll do it just to be, all right. Um, Article ten, old business, the Round Hill Committee, uh, next step. So, uh, vice chair, myself, Brian and Ben got on a call, um, and, and talked about the, uh, subcommittees. I know that all of you have expressed interest in serving. Um, and so I think what we had discussed is, uh, and, and again, this is what we've discussed. We don't have to do it. I'll let one of you make a motion, uh, if it sounds good. Uh, but what we had discussed doing is having Vice Chair Oxley chair a subcommittee of five members. Um, and he'll choose the five members. And the thought is that any planning commissioner that is not on it, which would be four of us, myself included, that would not be on it, can attend any meeting and participate in any meeting. However.
Clarify to, I did not request to be on that either. I mean.
So you'll be with me in the four.
I've got other things going on, sorry. Can't do one more.
Okay, perfect. So, uh, uh, again, you and I can attend any meeting we want and participate. If there happens to be a vote, it would be limited to those five. However, any vote that they would make would be something they would be bringing to us. So we would in fact have a vote on it. Um, I have received a note from the governance committee to have Timmy on it. I've received other notes, uh, about Timmy as well. I've passed them all on to Ralph. Um, so again, that, that is my recommendation, but I'm not going to make that motion if we, we can discuss now. And, uh, if somebody, if, if that sounds agreeable, we can, we can make that motion or modify it. But I do think there's something to having a standing committee of five versus nine, is we have, we're going to have to schedule this during the day. So that's something that might, might want everybody to understand. Um, and it will be easier if we have less members. Uh, member Rissy then, uh, member, uh, trustee Norhoff.
I just wanted to say, I, I've, uh, recently been in a course, thank you, Brian, uh, for zoning administration. And working through that course, it has become increasingly, uh, obvious to me that, uh, we're on the right track with this. And this is very important. And, um, I, I think that, uh, member Maxley would do a fine job, uh, with this, uh, leading this. And so I, I would give up my support and pending any further discussion, I'd, I'd make a motion.
Okay, uh, trustee Norhoff.
My only concern is a quorum in the committee. Five or nine?
Yep.
Do we want a quorum in a committee?
We can, because anything that's passed up as a, a recommendation, we, I want a quorum in the committee. So we have a recommendation that would come to this planning commission and we would vote on it. So all this subcommittee will do is, is make a recommendation.
Now, would, initially I thought what we had talked about is that there would be a township board, uh, board member and some staff members involved in that committee too. Is that not the way, the direction it's going now?
The staff will be, uh, involved. Um, and if, uh, vice chair Oxley, if he, we go in this direction selects, uh, trustee Norhoff, that will be representative. Obviously, yeah, right. Okay. Any other questions or thoughts? It must be easier if the chair was on one end.
I know. You could be like.
Yeah, I'm just gonna like go down there. Well, I want to make sure I don't miss anybody, you know. Um, all right, so does somebody want to take a crack at making a motion?
I think I just did. I'll make the motion, uh, member Maxley to, uh, chair and select, uh, members to be part of a committee that will report back, uh, to the planning commission.
The committee.
The committee will consist of five members, but it'll be, but all the meetings will be open to the public.
And that subcommittee will be tasked with making recommendations based on the report.
For Round Hill.
Yes.
Support.
Support from Member Raffin, motion made by, uh, Member Rissy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any posts? It carries. All right, uh, member Maxley, I would ask that you select your members, talk to them and, uh, report back, uh, that, that your committee has been officially formed at the next planning commission. That was a lot easier than I thought it would be. Um, thank you all. Uh, it was a long call. Uh, example of a mailing notice. Brian?
So this just came up at our last meeting. There's a question before of what the mailings look like when they go out and how residents can view them. So there's an example there in your packet. So you'll see that larger paragraph, it does have a phone number for myself. And then they, obviously the township address, they can call and stop in and look at information. And then we do add that link that's on there to the website too, where the, you can download packets as well. So that's what it looks like. If, I don't have any thoughts or.
I, it, it looks so darn formal. It looks like you're being served with a lawsuit. Like, can you create like some, an FAQ at the bottom of it? You have questions, call this person. If you want to see more information, click on this website. Uh, that, that would be my only initial feedback. I, I like what you're doing with it, but following this format, it's going to get lost, uh, if I'm putting my marketing hat on from a message perspective.
Gosh, I don't see it that way. I, I think it works pretty good. I'm getting them for years. I'm.
But you are probably one of the most engaged citizens.
I wouldn't say that. I, I don't serve on any committees or anything. I'm just here.
That's a compliment and all.
Oh, I am on one committee. I think they're back. I don't want to sell my committee short.
I, again, I'm not saying it has to be changed. If, again, if I, but if I look at it through like a messaging hat, that's, that would be my only, and it's not even a critique as much as observation.
But it, it's, sorry, I just want to clarify. It's an actual letter.
Yeah, 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 this gets, this is. First class mail.
A little postcard. Participated. So my question though, I guess, is, does all started because we had a couple of people come that did not know anything about that. So added to this original was, did you add the?
This has been like this for a while now. So there, yeah, I mean, we try to put my number on there so they can stop in or call. And again, we put the link on.
So nothing's changed with it.
No.
Because it was already adequately there.
Correct.
And I, I would only agree from, from the marketing standpoint of this is all very, like, precise and clinical. And somebody might not know what type one special use means. And we talked about putting a QR code to go to the address. Something that makes this more like plain language, what does this mean for you, might be helpful.
Or even an FAQ, a separate sheet that's in there, that's an FAQ, that just.
I think that two aren't most public things that you send, supposed to be sixth grade reading level, like sixth grade level. And I think maybe that's where this doesn't, I mean.
Well, maybe the thing to do then would be in that blank half page that's below the map. You could have a breakdown for different things. So if the request is a type one special use permit, uh, maybe you could, you know, have, I don't know, maybe there, maybe we need to draft up some answers to frequently asked questions. As to when somebody gets this and says, well, what is that? This sounds really bad. It's a type one special use permit. Are they going to be taking spacecraft in there? You know, I mean, it, it, you know.
I guess that's, that's the idea of just putting my number in is hopefully anyone who just call me right away and I can answer any of those questions.
Cause I'm sure.
It's less exciting.
Wide range of responses to this.
Easier.
Do you know me? Cause I'm sure some people take it quite formally and some people just throw it in the trash. I mean, you probably get all ends of the spectrum.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I guess.
I think a phone number is good because I think if I got this as a citizen and I, you know, I'm not as smart as some people. But if I got this, I would just, if there was a phone number, then like, great, here's a phone number. I'll call this guy and hey, I got this letter. What does it mean?
I'd, I'd make, I'd make a couple of recommendations here. Okay. One, I would recommend that we put the area code in on the phone number since you have to dial six one six now.
Yeah.
And then, uh, maybe we also add a larger font sentence somewhere that says, if you have any additional questions, please, or any questions about this.
Pull out that first sentence there, which is giving the phone number, trying to make that a little more plain and clear for them.
Yeah, just kind of break that out on its own.
Put it at the bottom and just make it a larger type set.
Yeah.
Yeah, that first sentence isn't super clear that you can call.
Hmm, it's, it's a, it's a little, it's a little hard to spot the phone number there, especially.
Questions, question. Uh, yeah, that's horrible.
Oh, Brian.
Yeah, it goes to the second line. Yeah, I completely missed.
That's what I was gonna say. Brian, do you really want us to make your number more visible? Or do you want us to do a frequently asked questions?
No, the number's, number's fine.
You know, you could, you, you could leave that paragraph the way it is and just add the, yeah, have questions. Call and then the, call Brian at, and then have the phone number, you know, and make that stand out a little bit at the bottom or something.
Please put that at the bottom.
Yeah, I think that would.
But bolded in a bigger type.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that would, that would be good with the area code.
Yeah, I completely missed the phone number, honestly.
Yeah. Well, I saw how the line started with O two two four and I thought, oh, that's, that's the planning department's phone number. And then I looked at the other line, I'm like, hey, there's a nine four nine.
I'm so used to seeing an area code too.
Right, right.
Brian, do you have many people actually come in during the business hours to look at the information and what, what, what is available to be reviewed in the office versus, versus what's online?
So, I mean, everything in the plan file, I'll pull that out and talk that through with people if they have any questions, anything specific, so.
Add your email too. We've got Sue's there. Let's add, let's add yours.
Yeah, I'll let, on that last lane, I'll just put my number and email.
Emails are better than phone calls, right? You can respond to them when you have time to do it.
Yes, people that are afraid to reach out are.
Yeah.
More likely to.
Or if they're working eight to five, when Brian's working, if they're at home, they can send him a note and then he can respond the next day.
Yep, I'll put number and email at the bottom.
Except your elderly population, which is what we had.
They just come into the office. They walk right in.
You haven't met your predecessor, have you? He went in a lot. All right, awesome. Thank you so much. I think we've got one other piece of old business, uh, from the vice chair.
Uh, yeah, Brian, zoning map, I think last time, or several members who did not acquire those.
Mission to make sure we reminded each other to get them at the end.
Any word on the email addresses?
Ben, I did hear, I think he had that, I think he was going to reach out to you. I'll bug him tomorrow because I think they're.
I know that he told me they're ready and they figured out a way that we don't have to do, uh, to, or, uh.
So I think they're.
Think they wanted to put something on the device. So, okay. Um, and then we were going to put, we got some of the bylaw stuff back. I, I punted it to the next meeting because I didn't want it to go super long. I hope that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
That's fantastic.
Awesome. That'd go next. Yeah. Um, all right. And then, uh, can somebody make a motion to approve the, uh, closed session minutes as detailed as they are?
So move.
Support.
Move by Member Rissy's support. I, um, Deirdre, uh, during all those, uh, in favor, say aye.
I think it was Member Corset.
Everybody's quicker than me today. I'm like, five seconds too slow, which is a long time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries, uh, will approve the minutes. Uh, any other business?
I just wanted to say, I was, um, I hate to say it, but the, the first time I walked into the township, the new office was this past week. I had to go get a passport. And, um, he just did an amazing job. First of all, the building's beautiful inside. It's, I was really impressed walking in to see what it looked like. So kudos to, you know, the design team and, and just everyone that played a part in, in getting that together. I think it's a really, really nice space for them. Um, and then the woman who was at the front desk that greeted me was so nice and helpful. And the woman who, uh, you have to make a, an appointment now to get your pass. Uh, you have to make a, an appointment now to get your passport, I didn't realize that because a couple of years ago, my husband went and it was just a walk in and, you know, get it done. She was like waiting for me at the desk, so it, it was just, it really well run and so I just wanted to say. I know things have been a little difficult lately with staffing issues and stuff and they really just. Made me feel welcome when I walked in and, and took care of me in quick order and. So if you could pass those comments along, they just did a great job.
Sure, they knew who you were.
I'll, I'll echo that.
And I don't know, maybe they did.
I thought there must be a benefit to having that somewhere, now I know where it is.
No.
Works every day.
I'll echo that too, Brian, I had two unruly children and I went in for passports and, uh, yeah, a lot of patience and so.
And that was the thing too, I got there, like, I was so concerned with remembering my, um, birth certificate and my marriage license that I got there and forgot the application. I did, I had to go, and she's like, take your time, I'm like, I, I live two minutes from here, literally, so. She was still waiting for me there when I got back, so, yeah, yeah, did a great job.
Awesome, any other business? Okay, um. Article twelve, do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, so we don't need to acknowledge any visitors, uh, article thirteen, a German.
So move.
Move by. Supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, have a good night off.
Thank you.